Board of Commissioners, if you would be so kind to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like your maids standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. I'm not aware of any changes to the agenda, correct, Clerk Schuler? Okay. Given that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have nobody signed up for public comments pertaining to items on the agenda, so we can move right to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now to the public hearing. We have on the agenda, a public hearing on voluntary annexation petition eighteen two two three. The background, this is a request by Essex Homes for annexation of approximately twelve point four acres consisting of the parcels indicated. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a moment to recognize that Max is back. And Max is back kind of at temporary capacity to help on this particular project and a couple others. But he'll be with us on a little part-time basis until we transition over into a new staffing person. So we just want to welcome him. But this is, we bade him goodbye, but he's back, so.
Yes, I never really left. I had Friday off, one day off. But, Mayor and Commissioners, as stated, the applicant is Essex Homes Southeast Inc., represented by Bob Bennett on behalf of the property owner Jim Leinberger. The site consists of three parcels amounting to approximately twelve point four one eight acres on parcel ID zero six one five nine zero zero three, zero six one five nine zero zero three D, zero six one five nine zero zero three E, located at twenty four ten, twenty four twelve Providence Road South. This is an aerial of the site. The property contains two single-family homes. The property is adjacent to the Barrington subdivision, the Barrington Phase Two subdivision there, and the Park Providence subdivision in the north, and some undeveloped land to the south, zone RM one and C three. The property is currently zoned R forty, single-family residential in Union County's jurisdiction. If annexed by the town, zoning must be placed on the property. If the annexation is approved, the Board of Commissioners should direct staff to investigate the initial zoning for the property. All statute and UDA requirements have been met for this public hearing, and notice was published in the Inquirer General on Friday, July thirteenth, and Friday, July twentieth. The requested action tonight is to close the public hearing. Then following tonight will be a motion to approve or deny the annexation petition. And if it is approved, we would need a motion to direct staff to investigate the initial zoning and petition for that zoning. The applicant is here to answer any questions, and I can answer any questions as well.
I just want to direct a question to our attorney, Mr. Buckley. Could you explain, this is a voluntary annexation, what are we allowed to do? Because I think there was some confusion on this, with this one.
Well, what you're allowed to do is just what is being proposed. And that is, you make the decision on whether you want to annex this property or not. And the fact that it was voluntary, it also means you can take action tonight on, it's quoted as technically an ordinance approving or the annexation. Or if you don't want it, you deny it. If you approve it, then, as it says, you need to go ahead and move forward to start the zoning process. The county zoning will be in effect for sixty days, so that the property is not without zoning. So it has zoning, you just want to put Waxahatch on it on. Now, if the petitioner desires to concurrently file a petition for zoning, now, if you accept it, then that can happen also. He doesn't have to wait for you to impose your zoning. He can file a petition and start that process concurrent with directing staff to put initial zoning.
Those can happen concurrently.
That can happen concurrently, that's correct. So that one doesn't have to follow the other.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Max? Mr. Burrow?
I have more of a question for Mr. Buckley. The action tonight that's been asked for is to close the public hearing. What I maybe mistakenly heard you say, that we could do more than that.
Technically, under the statute, you could adopt an ordinance the same night as following the public hearing. But I'm not sure what your procedures have been. You know, you can put it off to the next meeting, or you can, technically, you could take action tonight to approve or not approve it.
Procedurely, historically, we've waited the two weeks, so.
That's fine. I've already disrupted the procedure a little bit, so let's do what you normally do.
You helped us, and thank you very much for that. Commissioner Wesley?
So, for clarification, when we, after, if we choose to annex, we have the authority to assign the zoning that we would put on that, right? We don't take into any consideration what the applicant is requesting, or?
The applicant hasn't requested anything at this point. We have the responsibility to zone it, or it defers to county zoning if we don't do something in sixty days.
No, it's going to be sixty days where the county, then that ordinance goes away.
Yep.
And then there's no zoning on it. And if there's no zoning, then your comprehensive plan is in jeopardy of being attacked for not being a comprehensive plan.
Mayor Portem, any questions?
So, as I understand it again, just want to be clear.
Sure.
We can annex this property in tonight, or we can deny the annexation of the property? Or is this public hearing just, are we just having the public hearing tonight and then deciding it in two weeks? So are we doing what we do normally, or are we taking it?
If it's not on the agenda to adopt an ordinance, you would have to add that to the agenda. And you've already set your agenda, so technically, you would really rather wait until two weeks to take action on it.
Okay, so we're just hearing the information tonight?
Just hearing the information tonight, correct. I misled you a little bit by saying technically, under the statute, you could have adopted an ordinance. It doesn't mean that you have to adopt it tonight, if you annex, if you agree to annex it.
Tonight?
Well, no, to, well, no, tonight, you're just, today, you're just hearing.
So, just to be clear, we're having a public hearing.
Yes.
Unless there is a motion to change or modify the agenda, that's the extent that we're executing tonight.
That's the extent that your agenda calls, correct.
Okay. Commissioner Burns, questions?
No.
Commissioner Lee? The applicant, or representative for the applicant is here, I understand, Sarah Shirley?
Yes, it is our understanding that we are here tonight just to discuss and have a public hearing for the annexation, that the vote would happen at the August fourteenth meeting. So I'm just here to answer any questions in case anybody.
And you represent?
I represent American Engineering. I am the landscape architect for the projects. But we also have Jim Leinberger and Bob Bennett here.
Any questions? Thank you. So, having no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, next item up is some old business. We're going to take action on the Millbridge Major CUP Amendment Petition, CUP zero zero seven two three eight dash twenty eighteen. The petition information is included. I remind the board that we have, we make a motion to approve or disprove, and also facts, findings of facts, as well as the reasonable consistency statement. So, Tim, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if my slides are next. Yes. This is a request to extend the deadline for traffic improvements from the current deadline extension of December thirty first, twenty seventeen, which is passed to December thirty first, twenty eighteen, if the revised signal work isn't requested, and June first, twenty nineteen, if the revised signal work is requested. The intersection occurs in the northeast corner of the Millbridge subdivision, Waxahatch, Marvin, and Kensington. There it is, in the area of the property. Previously, I went over the property description, surrounding land uses, before, I already went through the, whoops, it's touchy, went through the background material that's in your packet. I'd showed you before the intersection, the existing intersection, how it looks, the intersection diagram for the road improvements. And then the additional scope shows the movement of the signals to the new location. So on the graphic that's shown on the screen, it's taking those smaller masts and moving them back a little bit further. And that will save us the expense, if those were moved without the change in scope, we would have an expense later to move those. So staff supports the Major Conditional Use Permit Amendment with the extension, as staff was saying, to December thirty first, with the revised scope of work. The schedule through the year has moved, and so schedule's getting a little tighter for that December timeframe at this moment. The planning board recommendation was to favorable recommendation, but the extension of the deadline until June first, twenty nineteen, with a revised scope. So the motion at this time is to approve as presented with the appropriate deadline, whether that is the staff's recommendation for December thirty first, twenty eighteen, with the revised scope of work, the schedule, like I said, is getting tighter, or the applicant's deadline date of June first, twenty nineteen, with the revised scope of work. You also, reasonable conditions can be added to the approval, that's the other choice, but the applicant needs to agree to those conditions, or a motion to deny, as presented. And of course, there's findings of facts for that motion, and then the reasonableness and consistency statement that will come after this.
Question?
Yes, the question's for the manager, really. Given the subject matter we covered in the work session about Kensington Drive, which date makes more sense to you? December of this year, or June first, two thousand nineteen?
I think, given where we're at in the project life, that June makes more sense at this point. So, we had an early recommendation, really, to kind of try to expedite it, but it's, they're going to need that time in reality to get it done, so.
You'll need it too, I guess.
Commissioner Wesley, any questions? Mayor Portem? Commissioner Burns? Commissioner Lee? Okay, so what would the board like to do with this?
I will make a motion to approve petition, CUP zero zero seven two three eight dash two zero one eight, with the deadline date of June first, two thousand nineteen.
We have a motion on the table to approve with the deadline of June first. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We just have it five zero. Given that the Board of Commissioners has approved a conditional use permit, we need to determine that you, first, have you found that the use request is among those listed as an eligible conditional use in the district in which the subject property is located or is to be located? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have you found that the conditional use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located, were proposed and developed according to the plan as proposed? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have you found that the conditional use meets all required conditions and specifications? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And have you found that the location and character of the conditional use, if developed according to the plan as proposed, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located, and in general conformity with the plan of development of Waxahatch, and it's in binds? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And Commissioner Burrow, since you made the original motion, would you make the motion for reasonableness and consistency, please?
Okay. Motion to approve the statement of reasonableness and consistency. The Major Conditional Use Permit Amendment request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals of the town of Waxahatch, and is reasonable and in the public interest, as it will accommodate future conditions of the Kensington Drive and Waxahatch Marvin Road intersection.
So we have a motion on the reasonableness and consistency statement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There you go, Tim, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Design Alternatives for Highway sixteen Widening Project U fifty seven sixty nine, A and B.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good, we skipped one.
I went on order. I turned the page too quick, would you bear with me? The next item on the agenda is Proposed Amendments to the Town Waxahatch Code of Ordinances. Kurt White, Matt, you can sit right there. I don't want you to have to walk too far, on my mistake, so.
Okay, hello, good evening again. Just wanted to continue our discussion from earlier here about the proposed amendments to the Waxahatch Code of Ordinances. As we discussed previously, these are a continuation of the, some of the items that were brought forth in the fall of twenty seventeen, some efforts to improve our existing Waxahatch Town Code as being something distinct from the Unified Development Ordinance, focused mostly on quality of life issues. And we, with the board's direction, we started breaking out individual items in that package of proposals, so that we could prioritize the things that we were seeing the most in the community, and that could kind of stand to make the most immediate impact. So in March, we did the, an update to the noise ordinance, and then, actually, in June, we worked on some ordinances around parking strategy, mostly that impacted the downtown area, including public sidewalk obstructions, parking within fifteen feet of intersections, and commercial vehicles. And the board did approve those ordinances. We gave a, it was about a thirty-day timeline for actual implementation of those ordinances, so that we would have a chance to educate the community, and specifically reach out to those who we knew may be most directly impacted by them. And so those become effective on August first. The next ones that we are looking at today that were in that initial list that, from last fall, was the, is the rollout trash containers and the recreational vehicles. So these will be some of the last ones that were part of that original package of items there. If the board wishes to move forward with some other priorities, we can have that discussion on other opportunities for improvement in the code. So, rollout trash containers. This would change what is currently section one ten of the code, and is currently a reserved section, and so we would add in this, which would be rollout trash containers and multifamily developments and/or businesses. And, so these are your rollout individual trash containers, and it would require them to be removed from the curbside, or not placed at the curbside any earlier than the day before their collection day, and then removed by noon on the day after collection day. It's a concern we've seen arising particularly in the downtown from time to time, where, because of the limited space, there is, most of the buildings front the street, and, or, they front the street, and there's, they're right up to the right-of-way line, and so what happens is that the containers end up getting a little bit disorderly, and can cause some aesthetic challenges, and even some, kind of get in the way of pedestrians and motorists, if they're left there for longer than what's absolutely needed for them to be collected. So there would be an associated fine with that, twenty-five dollars, after a warning from the code enforcement inspector. And the second ordinance that we're, that, I remember, that we're proposing is with recreational vehicles and trailers. So the first thing that this ordinance changes is it, is it, right now, the Waxahatch Town Code doesn't really define recreational vehicles in a way that's consistent with the North Carolina general statutes. It kind of lists a bunch of different types of recreational vehicles, and I'm not sure it's really comprehensive, or as clear as it could be. So we want to first tie it to the general statute, and then, secondly, one thing that, a lot of feedback we've gotten from the community, and within different subdivisions especially, and from our code enforcement inspector, is that a lot of these recreational vehicles and trailers and boats on top of trailers are being stored, and sometimes for an indefinite period of time in the public street right-of-way in these areas. So, I know there was a little bit of discussion earlier about, I guess, how far this ordinance should reach in terms of which kind of areas it applies to. And I actually did get clarification as well. Mayor, you asked regarding the fines. This would be, after that one hundred dollar fine, each additional day the violation is in existence is a separate and distinct violation, so the fines would accrue, up to daily, if possible, so. So, there's a couple, there are a couple motions before you, I'm not sure how that.
Yeah, so, this time, I'd like to ask our attorney to clarify. We had some discussion earlier in our work session, we had some minor changes that we thought would apply, extending it to the commercial side, et cetera. What would you recommend? What would you recommend we do with this?
I would recommend that you deal with the ordinance as originally presented. It's appeared on your agenda once before, at least once before. Even though you have the legislative right to amend ordinances or to amend proposals, since it's already appeared in the public record, since it's already appeared on your agenda, it would be my recommendation that you adopt, or not adopt, but you deal with just the ordinance as originally presented, then those items that you have been discussing as possibly being added to the ordinance, that be by a subsequent amendment brought back to the board as a separate item in the future.
Okay. All right. Everybody clear? Okay. Thank you. So there's your answer. So, do you have any further questions for Mr. White?
Yes, I'm just going to ask a question that was asked to me by a citizen in between the meetings. Is there already an ordinance in place for residential property as far as how long they can have the garbage cans out?
There's not.
Okay. HOA stipulations might come into play.
That's, yeah, that's, sure, HOA could regulate it differently, or they could regulate it.
Any further questions? What would the board wish to do with this? Entertain a motion?
I will make a motion to approve ordinance 2018018, amending business regulations.
You have a motion to approve the ordinance amending the business regulations. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I would also like to make the motion to approve ordinance number 2018019, amending recreational vehicles and trailers.
Motion, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
Thank you.
And so, at a future date, bring back some recommendations for the items we discussed during the work session.
At work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now that I have this right, we'll move on to new business item number two. Mr. Hubert. Come on back up and talk to us about Highway 16.
Absolutely. So this is to reintroduce the discussion we had in the previous work session about NC 16 corridor widening, U 5769. Again, this is to recommend that you select a Michigan-left alternative, super-street intersection design over the standard super-street intersection design specifically for the Kensington Drive-Cuthberton Road intersection at NC 16. Detail, again, in the previous work session, NC DOT presented an overview of their design for NC 16 corridor widening. The section from Ray Road down to Cuthberton Road is going to be a super-street design as it provides superior benefits to conventional intersection designs in order to improve safety, travel time, and capacity as we project future traffic volumes. This area is more open to future development and provides the room to facilitate that kind of construction. South of Kensington, we see reduced volumes, and the construction impacts by existing developments don't really allow for any major improvements that require additional right-of-way. However, because Kensington Drive and Cuthberton Road experience traffic volumes that sometimes are equal to NC 16's volumes or sometimes can exceed them, there's really a necessity to provide this Michigan-left style for this particular location. Explain. So here's a rudimentary drawing of what a super-street kind of does. NC 16 being the primary volume has the favored movement of all movements, whereas generally intersecting streets are considered the inferior or minor crossing, and so they are required to make turning movements and sometimes U-turns in order to complete their, the traffic pattern that you want to have. That's the standard layout. When we talk about a Michigan-left, what we're talking about, and again, I apologize for the nature of this detail, but I think it gets the point across, that here Kensington Drive would be allowed a through movement by the signalization. It would not be allowed to do a left movement because of the conflicts and the timing involved. The left movements would take a right and feed over, there would probably be a light here, and then allow them to continue on. Those details would be provided by NC DOT as they have the actual alignment prepared. Recommendation is, again, understanding that a conventional intersection is really not viable because the service levels just can't be supported in that alignment for conventional design. We recommend that we do approve, have the board approve, a Michigan-left alternative for Kensington Drive-Cuthberton Road in order to, for them to proceed with planning. We feel this intersection design offers those benefits specific to the traffic patterns here as both a north-south thoroughfare of 16 and an east-west connector for Cuthberton and Kensington Drive. Requested action is to ideally approve the Michigan-left design as presented or to deny it.
So as I understand it, we need to adopt or approve the Michigan-left because that's a deviation from what they normally do?
Right.
Do you just like that direction from the board?
Correct, correct.
Do we have questions for Mr. Hubert? Commissioner Westlake?
A while back when we talked about the widening project, and we went into a lot of discussion on bike lanes or wider, I can't remember what the term was you called them.
Those multi-path, multi-use path and wider.
So, I know that was a very basic diagram there, but are we, are those still part of the plan?
Absolutely, yes. They are indeed going forward with the previous discussions for the cross-section. This specifically addresses the vehicular traffic movement. It will affect how pedestrians are crossing, but it will actually improve those crossings as well. But there will be, like, I think we approved sidewalk on one side and a multimodal path on the other, that will remain.
Commissioner Burns? Commissioner Lee? We have no further questions. I'd be happy to entertain a motion to approve the Michigan-left design alternative in support of our staff engineer as presented.
Motion to approve a recommendation to NC DOT for a Michigan-left alternative at the intersection of Kensington Drive and Cuthberton Road.
We have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Matt. Next up, process for disposal of property. Manager Ferguson and Attorney Buckley.
I'll take the lead, but I'm going to be very brief. The town did receive an unsolicited offer for the purchase of the Niven Price Building. I believe it was last month. The offer was temporarily put on hold while the proposed purchaser wanted to verify, I guess, the numbers on his side. He then recontacted the town and said it is an active offer. That active offer is on the table. However, it's been referred to Mr. Buckley for his review, which led to a discussion that we've had versus, really regarding the methods of disposal of property for the town and what are legal options. So tonight, I think he's going to give a briefing on what those are and then entertain any questions.
Okay. First of all, the statutory citation should be 168-266. It's in the same article, it's in the same part, but the more specific authorization is in the 168-266. And generally, it's pretty simple. If you have real property that you want to dispose of, you may do that. You may not do it by just private negotiation, though. There is another way to do it, and I'll get to that in a minute. You can do it by private negotiation for an exchange, however. And it doesn't matter who you're exchanging with. It doesn't have to be another governmental unit, for instance. It doesn't have to be a profit or nonprofit corporation. It could be anybody. You can exchange so long as the exchange is equivalent value. Now, if you're going to do an outright sale, your methods are to either do it by a solicitation of the sale and the receipt of sealed bids, or you could do it by a sale, a negotiation, subject to advertisement and upset bid, so that the original proposer may not get the property. You don't have a guarantee. And that type of situation, you sit in the public hearing, I mean, the upset bid process as a fiduciary to the citizens of Waxaw to get the best deal. It's not a disclosure of the terms kind of, of a public hearing, advertised public hearing. It is a real upset bid situation. And then it's up to you to determine which is the best bid, but you generally would have to impose your fiduciary duty to the taxpayers to get the most money you can get. The other way is a public auction. You just go out there and you have an auctioneer come in and you just go through his, and you sell the property. Well, you'd put in there that unless a minimum bid is received, then, you know, but the methodology is not conducive to just a private negotiation. There is another way to deal with property in your downtown area, which, understand, this is where this property is located. There is a downtown development project authority in the general statutes, which is, excuse me, 168-458.3. A downtown development project, there are only a few limitations that you have. One, that the property must be in your downtown area as you have defined your downtown area. Number two, you have to have a private developer or a private person that you want to enter into an agreement to develop the property. It has to be a public-private development. It can be a single building involved. It could be a multitude of things. As an example, if you've ever been into Matthews and seen where their town hall library is in Matthews and the little street that comes back to it called Matthew Station Street, that was done pursuant to a downtown development project, which I worked on, this was from 98 to 2000, it was built in 2000. But the nice thing about it is, the private portion of the contract, the private developer, is not subject to bidding requirements. The private developer would give you a turnkey project. He would construct it. He doesn't have to follow the bidding statutes on awarding contracts. He can, you know, together, he would pick the architect and he would pick the engineer, however, he would have to get your consent. Not that you could withhold it arbitrarily, but, you know, you would want to see what the design, you together would design the project. It could be a building and a parking lot. It could be a parking deck, any number of things that you can develop. And I think that the manager's got a little suggestion about, so, almost immediate future about that, but nevertheless, you can come up with a project. The only other limitation is that the public portion cannot be more than 50% of the project. You're expended to it. You can convey the building to the developer without going through that process that I mentioned earlier. So that you can, but, so the end result would be there will be a public portion, some public infrastructure out of it, and there would be a private portion out of it. And the limitation, again, is your contribution, all the infrastructure and everything, your cost cannot exceed 50% of the budget, the project budget. So there is another way to do it in the downtown area. And if you've seen that, it turned out to be a pretty good project in Matthews. The only thing, problem is, they didn't allow enough parking. You think that a project's going to be successful, you just don't have any idea how successful it can be. So you have to plan ahead that you have all your bases covered. At the time that was built, it was felt that all the parking in there and on the private portion, not the public portion, but the private portion, would be adequate. Well, it proved to be not adequate. And so you just have to be careful. But it turned out to be an uptown, downtown, whatever you want to call it, project from Matthews that was an economic benefit to the town overall, to the taxpayers of Matthews. So it was a successful project. It was a benefit to the developer because he got to build his private portion, and he had a budget and the town had a budget. He got street, he built the streets, but then the town paid for it. The town got the town hall library combination. He built it, but the town got it. But it had a debt service to do that. The town owned all the land initially and then sold off private portions. And you could sell it to that developer, the only limitation being that you get a fair market value return, which would be a current appraisal. He paid for that. So he had no upfront capital cost. And then he bought the lot, each individual lot, as he had proposed tenants to be able to do it. So he, it was a win-win for the developer, it was a win-win for the town. And I just point that out as being an example of how a downtown development project can Those are basically your limits.
Questions?
Do you want to talk about the?
Do you want to add?
So I would suggest that that tool is the tool to utilize and really would be the only tool on a key historic asset on North Main Street that the town currently owns and has the control of its destiny. Upset bid, really, if it were a piece of dirt on the outskirts of town and you're just trying to maximize the value and get a dollar figure today for it, that might be approached, some other asset that you have, that might be the right approach. My suggestion would be that the thought process is, what is the long-term economic value of that building? And how will you recognize two things? One is the ultimate tax value for the next 50 years, and secondarily, the economic impact and activity that's associated with it. So, what's the vitality of the building as far as, how can it reach its highest and best use? And I think there's been a lot of discussion that that probably is not in the public sector long-term, it's probably resides in the private sector, and the private sector figures out the highest and best use of those buildings. But the tool, though, that Mr. Buckley described is very, very appropriate in my mind for that particular building and future redevelopment of it. The question, I believe, is one of timing. And so, the offer that was presented is a valid offer still. It was simply a business term-type offer, it wasn't an actual contract. We don't have a contract in hand, but understand that it's still a valid offer and that there's not an immediate timeframe that the board needs to respond this month or some immediate response. However, in the budget that was approved, there were dollars that were associated with a study, potentially with ULI, Urban Land Institute, of the downtown areas, and most importantly, the properties that the town owns downtown. So, this building, the parking areas the town owns, the lot that's beside the water tank, water tower, how to maximize those pieces in kind of what I would call is a chess game. It's not a one-off to determine how we sell this piece of property or utilize that piece of property, but how do they all work together? And then, how can we have a strategy, really, for that whole downtown area? And then also, really approach the question of if and when, there's one day a town hall built, or if there's a town hall facility designed by someone else and there's space leased, how would that work? Where could that go? Because those questions are questions that really need to be thought through before we really dispose of property. Now, does that mean the answers are always going to be set in stone? No, things do change, and so a building could move to a different site even though it's envisioned to go someplace, or certainly, a board could change and decide that they wanted to lease versus own or own versus lease. I mean, there's a lot of things that could be different there, but that really is a tactical long-term, or a strategic long-term plan for that, those assets that we have downtown. The great news is that the boards in the past have assembled some key pieces, and so from a parking standpoint, from a building space standpoint, this is a great position for this board to be in, to be looking at what you do long-term strategically downtown. This tool, though, that Mr. This tool, though, that Mr. Buckley has described, in my opinion, is the right tool to try to address the future use of that building. So that's just my perspective as far as where we are right now.
So we're scheduled, we're putting the finishing touches on a series of board work sessions for the month of August. And we have Town Real Estate as a topic area at one of the second or third meetings. Would that be an appropriate place to dive deeper on this in your mind or?
Sure. I think the other thing, too, that Kirk is working on is currently working on a couple of things, one being the scope for the study, for the proposed ULI study. The second is working on a potential list of stakeholders that would be involved in that, and that certainly would be downtown property owners. And those in the development community that are in the downtown area. There will be others, of course, nearby property owners, but those two key components start bringing together kind of the agenda for that session. We're working with those folks at the organization as far as the timing of it. So we want to be as quickly as possible, but yet make sure that what we're asking them to do is thoroughly thought through and that it's done well. I have seen this tool used with Urban Land Institute to really focus and drill down in specific areas in a town, and then it really produced great benefit on the other side. So it's good to get those fresh perspectives, those folks in the business community and the real estate community that really know what can work in a downtown. I do believe that there's value there for us and it is a little time and it is a little money. We're working to try to minimize the money part, certainly. But I think the value of it is the strategic planning part of it, of how it can work and how it can turn out. And to Mr. Buckley's point, the downtown Matthews development has been really an incredible thing for the town. And so we copy that, but there's an opportunity to use some lessons learned there.
Okay. So do we have further questions or any questions for Mr. Buckley or Mr. Ferguson at this time when we're going to do a deeper dive around this?
The most important thing to me is that we are able to guarantee that the integrity of that building stays the same, that we maintain the look of downtown like we have right now, that a developer's not going to just come in and knock this building down. So do we, this is like a guarantee, this, what you're talking about as a way for us to make sure the building remains that way or what can we do?
Well, the development agreement in the downtown development projects, you have a say-so in how it's developed. And if multiple parcels are involved, you have a say-so in whatever cross easements and cross, I mean, you have a total input. You're an equal partner in that transaction. Your development agreement is what governs. And so if your development agreement governs what the building will look like after it's redone or refurbished, you have the right to say what it's going to look like. And it's a contract between you and that developer and you can hold him to that contract.
So even if then that developer goes and sells to someone else, that contract still?
A contract, because you record it. You record a plat of it. You define the downtown development area and you survey it out and you record a plat. Later, you can put some kind of zoning on it that would comply with that as well. So that you have multiple control tools in place.
One thing I would note with that particular building, there has been interest expressed in looking at the facade of the building and trying to make some improvements, particularly to one side, which has been changed multiple times over the years and doesn't match. Just as a note, the two sides that do appear to match have also been changed over time and are not back to the original. And I'm not going to use the word historic because that's a timeline. So let's just say the original facade is different than what's out there today. If someone, whether it's the town or a developer, makes the right-hand portion of the building match the center and the left-hand portion, we have obtained some information on that and it's probably in the ballpark of forty-five to fifty thousand dollars to make the right-hand side match the middle and the left-hand side. However, that might not be what the board wishes to see as far as the facade long-term. It may be that there is a desire to have it be more window-like in appearance and go back closer to what the original pictures represent, which I believe we have some from nineteen fourteen or fifteen that show more windows. But those buildings have been modified fairly extensively on the front because you can go and you can actually see the new brick where they start and the old brick where they start. So new information for you tonight, but we did get a construction company to look at just the right-hand side, kind of matching what's there and removing those boards and then creating a new inset so that it would actually match what's there today. Now, we're not making a recommendation that you do that, but that could be part of a discussion with the developer. Do you want the development ultimately to kind of match what's there today or do you want it to go back to something that was much, much earlier? And so that would be a discussion point that could be included in business terms in the contract for the agreement.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much. Last item of new business, the attorney's sixty-day observation discussion. Been here sixty days already?
I have no idea how many days it's been. I must be having fun, though, because it's passed quickly. I didn't write anything out. I didn't want to give a speech. I didn't want to give anything that would appear to be anything other than just my observations. And so I'm going to be speaking from the heart, so to speak. But the first thing that I can say, number one, you have an incredible staff working here. I've worked with other municipalities over the years and you have a very professional, very competent staff. And I have, I think have developed a little bit of relationship with a lot of them. And I think there is a mutual confidence in each other. And I'm very appreciative of that because I was kind of the outsider coming in and coming in on an interim basis. And yet I think there has been a development of a relationship and we have confidence in each other. And I think that the staff has been just extraordinary, what I have seen in what limited observation I have. I think the town board has defined its role. I look at the general statutes to see how things are supposed to flow and, but relationships are not general statutes. My observation is that the board knows its role, the staff knows its role and how they connect. You are the management of the government of Waxahol. You have a council manager form of government. So it seems to me, in my limited observation, that each knows their roles. The staff operates under the town manager. They function in that direction as a statutory authority that he has. But they don't look at the statutes, they just go to work. So you seem to have an understanding of what that relationship is. It seems to me, in my limited observation, that you recognize that you, under the council manager, that you have an administrative hit to lead the, and perform the services for the town. I just picked one that, because it's the most popular one, to talk about. City of Charlotte doesn't care about this because it's so large that that's not a problem. But a lot of small towns, and this is not necessarily a small town, I don't mean that, but let's just say that a lot of places you will find where there is an uncomfortableness with what those roles are. But I haven't found that to be true here, which is refreshing to me to see that everybody understands what their roles are. In most small towns, the elected officials want to get into personnel files because they think, well, I'm the supervisor of all the staff. Well, I haven't seen that here. Haven't seen that or experienced that where you know that the city manager hires and fires. That's not your job. Your job is to adopt the pay plan and job classification. You give him the staff to operate through the pay plan and job classification. That's your role because that sets the policy of the town. You knew how to go through the budget process. You went through that, but you recognized that what he recommends was a statutory process. But it was a recommendation. You, as a board, adopted the budget. So you set order, you adopt ordinances tonight. You adopt zoning. You create what the face of Waxahol should be and he carries out what you say it should be. And I find that working very well here. I don't see where there's anybody trying to go beyond their roles. So I find that very refreshing. I find that one of the things that I first got here was, it seemed to me that some of the voting on zoning was a little cumbersome. This is just my observation. I was used to a motion to approve or deny that contained the reasonless and consistency statement within that one motion. But now that I've been here for several meetings, I find that probably will pass better muster with the North Carolina Court of Appeals than the, oh, move to approve and it's reasonable and it's consistent and it's reasonable because it reduces traffic. Well, zoning's going to ever reduce traffic. That's just not going to happen. We're not going to stop cars until there are no more cars. That's the only time you're going to stop traffic. So, but I think that your procedures, I find to be probably much more conducive to passing muster with the Court of Appeals if you got in litigation than the soft method of doing it. I think your formality and the way you do it will pass muster much easier than the soft method. So I commend that to you, the way you set things up. And I commend that your agendas are all clear and it's, the public cannot be saying there is not transparency. Your agendas are very clear. And so I don't know how to say anything about the first sixty days other than you've kind of won me over on the method of adopting zoning ordinances. You've kind of won me over because we've always taken the position where I've been before was when you introduce and say a zoning ordinance or a zoning application, that when you adopt the resolution calling for a public hearing, that's the first time it's appeared on the agenda. You don't need to vote on it or appear twice as an ordinance. But I have no doubt that this would pass muster with the Court of Appeals. Because what the Court of Appeals rules on now is totally different than it was ten years ago or twenty or thirty or forty years ago. We don't have the ability as a town anymore to be the one wearing the white hat and everything we said is correct. The Court of Appeals no longer takes that. Private and individual, and this is not to say they're not correct. Private and individual rights are always going to take precedence in a court decision unless you've dotted every i and crossed every t and followed every statute to the hilt. At one point, the General Assembly seemed to give cities the right to be able to have a certain set of local government, I mean, of self-government. There's a, and you may have already heard of this, the old Dillon Rule, that you don't have any authority unless the General Assembly has specifically given it to you or if you, it's necessary and proper to carry out a function to make what was given to you work. Then the General Assembly adopted that cities may govern as they see fit. The Court of Appeals, and there's some cases, the Supreme Court ruled on this one, that basically unless there's authority to do it, you can't do that anymore. That we get caught up in a situation where we've always done it this way and now the courts are saying, wait a minute, you don't have that specific authority. You've kind of gotten off the center line of your authority. Well, the way you have things set up, it's quite clear that you're dealing within the authorized governmental function that the general statute says you have. There's no gray area in there that people get off on a tangent and fall into a trap. Well, we can do this. I'm thinking like impact fees and things like that. You don't have any of that and nobody can now because the Supreme Court says you can't have those. But there are other things that the cities have done that didn't quite fall into authority. Well, I don't see any of that happening here. And I think why it doesn't happen is because your procedure, your procedure and way of doing things is the correct way to do things. And I don't know that I'm sitting in judgment on this and why I say all this, that you can give a hoot about it. You just asked me for my observation. So what I'm saying is, I think everybody knows their roles. I think everybody understands their role and I think that the way you do things, I don't have any suggestions to correct it. The first time I came, I thought, gosh, this is just too cumbersome. But now that I've been here, have fallen into the pattern of how you do things, then I'm not going to make a recommendation. Now, we got caught up in something this past two weeks. That was not a procedural issue. That was a jurisdictional issue. That was a true legal issue. And I think that we had to stop that situation where the zoning and the annexation were concurrent. That property is in Union County. It's not in Waxahol. You had no right to begin the zoning process until it was in Waxahol, if you understand what I'm saying. So, time out, can't do this. And oh, gosh, what's that Buckley done now? He stopped everything. But that was slightly different from what I'm talking about tonight. I think that your normal procedures, your normal way of doing things are better than, I mean, I can improve on it. And I'm not saying that I'm the guy, that's the god guru of municipal law. I'm just saying that there, the way you're doing things is spot on.
Thank you. We'll take that.
But I do think it's important that everybody understands the roles of each, of the municipal family, the elected and the staff. And like I say, so far, I haven't seen anything that would give rise to anything to say, whoops.
Any questions for Mr. Buckley?
Thank you for letting me say that.
Thank you. Okay, reports. We're on the home stretch here. I just want to mention a couple of things transportation-wise, and I kind of alluded to it during the work session. We've got a number of moving parts when we talk transportation. We have Highway sixteen as we just took action on Michigan left or Michigan right, we're somewhere up in that state. We have Great Byram. We have, we've learned, we had some work, great work done by the staff on getting a great crossing moved from Collins Road where there was no benefit to Helms, where there will be benefit. We found out that we will, our project's been accepted by the technical committee for, our Kensington Drive has been accepted for funding after three, two and a half years by the technical committee and will be voted on next month to the tune of somewhere between one point eight and one point nine million dollars. So that's all possible because of, as you said, Mr. Buckley, great staff. And that specifically, I said it earlier, the whole work done by Matt as he took over a new role to try to bring DOT, the Rail Division, South Carolina, the Union County, Mineral Springs along in twenty-one days so we could get it moved to the right place and benefit the region and Waxahol is just job well done. We'll give an update on all of these projects when all of it is finalized because we don't want to, we don't want expectations misset. But there's a lot of work totaling a lot of money that is starting to come to fruition. So thank you to the staff for that. That's all I wanted to say. Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Wesley, Commissioner Lee, Commissioner. Then I will entertain Mr. Ferguson's report at this point in time.
I have two items tonight. One is National Night Out is coming up on August the seventh. And so there'll be a number of neighborhoods that'll be visited by the police department. That has not been finalized yet, but that information will go out. But National Night Out this year, August seventh. The second is, and I believe I'm going to look to Dina on this, whether we finalize the date, but we're looking at a ribbon cutting for Town Creek Park on August the eighth. So that playground equipment is almost done. It's not quite finished, but that's the, unless something gets that off track, we'll be out there on August eighth, nine thirty a.m. for ribbon cutting in Town Creek Park. And those are the two items I wanted to highlight. We have some other ribbon cuttings that are going on around town and I think you're starting to see some of those announcements. So be aware of those. I know there's two or three that are coming up fairly quickly. I know there's two or three that are coming up fairly quickly. And I'd just like to say, I really did enjoy and appreciate the updates on the work plans tonight from some of our committees. I'm very glad to see that we got those tonight and get some real good information from our committee heads.
Any questions for the manager? We have nobody signed up for public comments, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Does everybody hesitate for adjourn?
I know.